Cost one.
Jason's.
Sixty-five minutes out.
I'll make the motion to set the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion is saved. I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. There's three items on your consent agenda for tonight. Item B one is the adoption of amended resolutions establishing the regular meeting dates of the Beaumont City Council for 2024. That's due to the Thursday, I mean, the Monday, April first meeting being moved to Thursday, April fourth. Item B two is an ordinance granting a franchise to Duke Energy Carolina's LLC. This is the second reading of this order that's granting a franchise to Duke Energy. The first reading occurred on March the fourth at the regular city council meeting. And this franchise, franchise permission for Duke to maintain its lines with the transmission of electricity long, over, and under city property. That includes highways, streets, roads, sidewalks, alleys, lanes, bridges, and other public places. And the last item, P three, is acceptance of certificate of sufficiency and scheduling a public hearing on petition requesting non-contiguous annexation or late reforms identified by tax parcel ID numbers one nine three five five eight, one nine three five five seven, one nine three five five nine, and two zero one four five nine. The city clerk filed addition to meet their requirements for annexation. So a public hearing can be scheduled at this time, and it can be scheduled for May the sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Those are three items on the consent, Mayor.
Are there any questions for city manager's staff on any of these? Okay, well, with that, we'll go into our regular agenda.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion for the second?
Second.
I'm in favor.
Approved.
All right, agenda item C, one, Keener Boulevard Memorial sign.
Thank you, Mayor. Item C one is Keener Boulevard Memorial sign. Councilor Rumpel brought this item to the attention of council and staff. Back in October, I believe, we had a follow-up conversation on November the sixth. And it was determined that council didn't want to move forward with recognizing Robert Stephen Keener, who was killed in action during the Vietnam War. Since this time, we've obtained a quote from sign connection. And the estimate for that sign is six thousand dollars. We did look to see if that cost can be covered, and it can be covered in the CIP program, so no budgeting is necessary. So really, the sign location is the one thing that is inside your agenda packet. We, staff and then Mr. Rumpel and I drove along Keener Boulevard. And then I looked at the GIS and determined if there was any particular spot that may work better than others, and came up with the location on Prince Street and Keener Boulevard. You can see that it's located by a star. I feel like this location is really visible to the area. It's a prominent location, and you can tell by the map that it is in the right way area for the city, Prince Street. We did look at a backup location where, kind of to the side of the parking lot over there. You can see that Prince Street kind of extends down into Keener Boulevard. And so that area is a little more, it's harder to see at that intersection due to some of the landscaping there at the corner. And so we feel that the best location would be the location of Star. I checked with the sign fabricator. They said if I take six weeks to get the sign fabricated, and then once we do that, we can install it. And then Councilor Rumpel and I kind of discussed the best process that we could use for some kind of unveiling. I think it'd be appropriate, once we get that sign in the ground, probably cover it up, and then schedule a time for whoever wants to be there to be there at unveiling ceremony.
Do we, do we know, and Jason, I don't know if you've talked to, like, Park or anybody. Does anybody know if there's any, like, surviving family members, descendants, like nephews, great-grandkids, or something like that?
I know some of his classmates. They're actually relatives, my dad's one, that I could ask and see if there are any descendants.
It'd be nice gestures to say, save your heart of family members out there, so.
We talked about our time in American Legion or.
Were there any locations further north on the northern side of Arnold Stove? Because a lot of people will cut through, if you're on Keener again, a lot of people will cut through Arnold Stove. About south. That was my only question. If you're, you're gonna go down Arnold Stove from Keener, you're never gonna see the sign.
Maybe on the corner where the fire department is, maybe that corner, the chance in this map, right there. We did look at it. That area is, kind of goes down the hill. There's some vegetation there that we have to clean out. We looked at the other side, too. We looked at, you know, walkable areas along Keener. And just felt like that's probably the best location. It has a current sidewalk. As you can see, they kind of almost would approach it. Maybe with the extension of the sidewalk, if somebody wanted to walk to the sign and see what it read. You could, you could actually walk to it on that side where it's located.
Is it, and it might just be difficult based on the math, which is an approximation. My only question was, is it, it's gonna be apparent that it applies to Keener Boulevard. It's not gonna look like it's on Prince Street, is it?
No, like the angle of it, we'd like to put where you can see this as Keener. It still needs to stay out of NCOOT right away. That's what we're looking at. The city right over there.
Does it will be double sided?
That was my only other question. I guess this is fine if it's a DOT.
It's out of there right away, so it's on us.
This is gonna be more like a sign versus like a monument, like the one that's at Park Street there on Catawba, the French Catawba. I saw that one the other day. That's more like a monument, you know? This is gonna be more like a sign.
This is a white sign. You'll have a post and then.
Yeah. Isn't like our historic district signs, you know?
I don't know about historic district signs or not, but county looks fine. The details of the sign go back to another.
I think that was the only other thing, too. Was there like a certain design or something that we had to do? Or is it, this is fine as is?
Yeah, what I did was I sent just a description of something that could, of course, I sent this to the sign rendering that, that Councilor Rumpel gave me. I sent that over to them, say, hey, can we make it look like this? And then they responded. Then we had a few back and forths as far as would it have like raised lettering? Would it be like a plaque kind of material? And they were saying, no, the size, sign of this, this size would be hard to have like that plaque raised lettering. And so this one would be, I think, forty-eight by forty-eight is the dimensions of it. Yeah, forty-eight by forty-eight, double sided aluminum, vinyl detail, and then a clear coat to protect the vinyl. Install on the post, and it'll have breakaway bolts. The bottom part connects into the ground.
How tall?
Didn't say anything about the heights or.
I mean, just up where the post is gonna be on, like, out of the ground?
Yeah, I don't know the height from like where the post would be to the ground.
Yeah, the ground. You guys like the, the sign versus like alignment, like?
Yeah, problems there. I think it's fine. I know, like I said, the, the city has historically partnered on two signs with the Historic Beaumont Foundation to designate where the historic district begins. So I don't know if we'd maybe take the height of that. It seems pretty suitable. And that's what I would, for, for something like this, just to compare it to.
All right, so this is informational.
If you all would like to approve the locate, location in the corner, then I'll go forward.
Motion to approve the sign's location at the corner of Prince Street and Keener Boulevard.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second. I'm in favor. All right, motion passes. All right, item C two, I believe, are you going to continue this public hearing until May sixth? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe the best, cleanest thing would be to, a motion to rescind the vote set on April first, and then make a second motion to set, continue it till May, May sixth.
I will, I make a motion to rescind our previous vote continuing this hearing until the April, I guess, time, April first meeting.
I'm in favor.
And now I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing and complete kids until the May sixth regular city council meeting. Second.
I'm in favor. All right, thank you. All right, C three, Chronicle Mill Parking Lot Agreement Update Discussion.
Good evening, council. As noted, this is a, just an item for your discussion for the eighty-five Catawba parking lot. And this item was brought originally before you as a proposal for a lease agreement with Chronicle Holdings LLC, specifically related to the spaces that are on property owned by the city of Belma, and how it aligns with the parking spaces that are on a lot owned by Chronicle Holdings LLC, specifically for the use of the eighty-five Catawba parking needs. So for your discussion this evening, I do have a representative from Chronicle Holdings LLC here, Craig Romero. All right, perfect. And so if you have any questions specifically for him about options for parking for zoning compliance and/or the lot itself, he is in the room to kind of help facilitate that dialogue for you this evening. But a really brief recap, what we're coming for you, for your feedback on this evening is in follow-up to council's direction to provide an alternative for the parking lease agreement that was originally proposed. We were originally having discussions with Chronicle Holdings on a shared use parking agreement in order to help fulfill their zoning compliance requirements for the site. After further review of looking at the parking numbers and what their current use is, as well as their future uses of the site, the applicant has requested an alternative proposal for your consideration, which would be to ask the city to withhold any outfit permits for the remaining eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four square foot of office retail that's designated within their commercial areas within the building itself. There's currently no tenant identified for that space and/or spaces. And so having the city have a, a check-in point at that point to say, you know, until parking is identified, no further use would be allowable within the building itself, other than what's currently activated today. And in doing so, the agreement there would be that an outfit permit would only be issued for that eighty-nine hundred square foot of space. If one of the three in or a combination thereof happened, either the developer would construct additional parking on an adjacent lot. They do own an adjacent lot at the corner of the existing site. If parking spaces are not deemed to be a public lot right now, we said, the spaces that are on the city of property, staff's understanding is that those have not really been deemed or advertised as a public lot, that those have been, understanding that they've been owned by the city, but we haven't really included them on any public parking maps. So if they're not deemed to be, quote-unquote, a public lot, then we could still, or the applicant could still ask the city at a later date prior to occupancy of the additional remaining office and retail spaces to enter into a shared use parking agreement, which is one of the things that we were discussing at our last meeting. And/or if the city would prefer to see those spaces deemed as part of a public lot now that they've been approved, we could look, if you would like to open it up for that, at what our parking requirements and/or allowances are within chapter nine, which actually has some allowance for counting public parking spaces for uses within three hundred feet of public parking lots. So there are options the developer could pursue at the time that they're ready to activate that additional nine thousand or so square feet. But at this time, they are proposing an alternative to ask for the ability to finalize zoning compliance on the building withholding the outfit permits for activation of that specific area. Along with this, they are proposing to mark the current parking, if you all would like them to do so, to, in order to clearly distinguish between the parking spaces that are in the thirty-seven specifically for the eighty-five Catawba lot, and to distinguish those markings specifically from the spaces that are on property owned by the city of Belma. And this could be done with labels or different colored striping, as you see fit. But they are, are offering to do that in order to help clarify some of the confusion that has happened previous. As well as, they are proposing that once we come to an understanding of what the city's use needs are, as well as their own private use needs, instead of what was happening previously on the site where there was a reserved parking sign installed in two locations, one at the Chronicle Street entrance and one at the Catawba, and on all the white walls. They are asking for the ability to restrict and, and install a reserved parking sign specifically at the entrance to the parking lot located on East Catawba Street that is on the entrance to the lot and part of the property that is specifically owned by Chronicle Holdings LLC. So again, that would mean no sign being reinstalled at the Chronicle Street entrance to the public, we own property. So just as reference for your screen, for dialogue and conversation, we have included an aerial photo where you can see the property lines, as well as the spaces that fall both on the property owned by Chronicle Holdings LLC, as well as the property owned by the city of Belma. And then also on your screen, as well as in your packet, are numbered amounts of parking spaces totaling to thirty-seven, showing that thirty-seven spaces are contained within the eighty-five Catawba parcel. There are twenty-two on the portion of the parcel owned by the city of Belmont. So with that, also in your packet, there was a chart breaking down those uses. Again, this proposal is assuming the proposed request to withhold the parking requirements that would be needed for that eighty-nine hundred and forty-four square foot area of commercial. So it, based off what's currently proposed and utilized today on site, Chronicle Mill's site itself contains two hundred and ninety-four parking spaces on the property. And I will do my best to try to, to explain what we had talked about in terms of this. So our ordinance at LDC actually allows for shared parking between non-competing uses. And so one of the caveats to that is that nobody's required parking can be shared in excess of fifty percent. So in order to look at what's allowable for shared use by the Chronicle Mill development, what first we had to determine was how much of the parking for the eighty-five Catawba building is actually required versus what's actually on the ground itself. So what you can see there is on the eighty-five Catawba privately owned portion of that parking lot, there are thirty-seven spaces in total. Based off the square footage of that building, only twenty of those parking spaces actually are required in order to meet their compliance for parking requirement. That means that because twenty are required, only ten of those twenty can be shared. So that means in order to calculate how many can be shared by the Chronicle Mill Development project, we're looking at the ten that are allowable from the required parking, as well as the seventeen that are remaining on that site, to get to a total of twenty-seven spaces on the property for the eighty-five Catawba office building that would be able to be utilized as a shared use between the Chronicle Mill Development and that office space. They did, as a, a means of getting a crosswalk approved by NCOOT, lose one on-street parking space that was originally included in the two ninety-four, so you can see they've subtracted that from their total, meaning that their proposed is to provide, per this agreement, and per this proposal of removing the commercial area until it's actually activated, three hundred and twenty parking spaces in total. The requirements, as you can see there, require based on that, three hundred and fourteen, which is based off of their approved parking requirements within their conditional zoning projects. So the proposal does provide for parking in excess of what's currently being utilized on the site. When we look at activating that additional eighty-nine hundred and forty-four square foot, at that time, they would need to demonstrate additional parking capacity in one or a mix of the methods already mentioned on the previous slide. And you can see what that would be. So you saw before, they have three hundred and twenty, and they only require three hundred and fourteen. So you're seeing an existing surplus of six. So subtracting that out from the future requirement once that commercial is activated. And they utilized one for two hundred and fifty square foot. There's a range, depending on whether it's office or retail, it could be a parking ratio of one to two hundred and fifty square foot or one to three hundred square foot. So they went with the lower one, just to make sure that they were communicating the maximum parking need available, since they do not have that future tenant identified. At the time of that activation of that outfit permit, we would expect them to provide a plan and/or parking on the ground for an additional twenty-eight parking spaces before we would allow or approve any outfit permit for that additional commercial usage on there. So that's the numbers that they want your feedback in discussion on, and also your feedback on how to properly delineate a site that does have a, a shared paved surface between property owned by the city of Belmont and Chronicle Holdings LLC. So that's all the slides I have. We can go back and forth. But at this time, if you have any questions for staff, I'm happy to answer those. If you have any questions or would like to ask any questions directly to the applicant, I'm happy to bring him up as well.
All right, are there any questions on this for our planning director?
I, I just, so I just wanna make sure, you know, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff in this presentation there. So I just wanna make sure it's clear in regards to what, what's gonna happen. These are, pardon, from my stance, just speaking for myself. I mean, the, the signage on Catawba Street, that, that's fine. Chronicle, yes, remove that. At the end of the day, the, the section that the city owned, and again, long day, so I'm just trying to articulate here. It needs to be open to the public is where I stand on this. That's not reserved parking. It's not for Chronicle. It's for whoever wants to use it. And I guess, right, but it, 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 it's not just, we're gonna go ahead and section this off. Just speaking for me, not for council, section this off and say this is only Chronicle parking. If, if that's the way, then of course, I'm not gonna support that. So that's, that's, I just wanna make sure I articulate that.
That is certainly one of the proposed options. So you can see that as open to the public as a public lot. You can see that as area that is owned by the city that happens to have some spaces on it, but you're not ready to advertise that as open for public use at this time. And/or you can enter into an agreement for an individual user for access at a later time. But right now, there's no agreement being requested based off of the current proposal. What's instead being requested is to withhold full occupancy or full use until a path or direction for that additional parking is identified. But the current proposal does not include any reserved parking for the Chronicle Mill Development on the land owned by the city of Belma.
So to the point about how we're gonna delineate between city-owned versus Chronicle-owned spaces, I'm not sure whether we're gonna, I think, in approach, we wanna have signs there to make that delineation. If we're not, do we reserve the right later on if it gets to what we're, if there's a lot of overnight parking? Do we have the right to come back later and maybe add signs to say no overnight parking?
Sure, so it is city-owned property, so you have whatever right you'd like to do on how you define the use and/or sign the property. But it is important that staff understands how you all view the parking that's available on that site so that we can make sure we apply the LDC appropriately for not only this development, but future developments that may come afterward. So however you'd like to see that, the current proposal doesn't take away any rights of the city to do anything with their own land. It's just to offer to delineate that so that there's no confusion for anyone on what spaces are specifically reserved for anyone associated with Chronicle Holdings LLC, whether that's the office tenant or the Chronicle Mill residents or businesses. And so how that looks is entirely up to you, if you wanna come back and add signage later, specifically related to control of the city-owned spaces. That is something that we would have every right to do. What I believe their thinking sharing is, they would also like the ability to sign and control the spaces specifically on their private property because their office tenant requires some sort of ability to make sure that their tenant can have enough spaces to park there for activation.
Do you have any recommendations on how you make that delineation on that shared paved space?
The applicant has some ideas, and I would invite them up to kind of talk about some of those ideas and see if you guys have any preference on anything.
Do you have any, yourself, any recommendations there?
I do not. It's really up to what you all see the vision of this site being. And then we can work with you to determine how to most appropriately delineate that or mark that or sign that. But first, I would need to know how you all view this, if you view it as a public lot, if you view it as parking that is currently paved, but might not be utilized for anything right now, and, you know? Or is it just part of something that you guys purchase when you purchase the land? Or, you know, how you want that to be considered or viewed?
How you view it, Jason?
I view it as a public lot, for sure. I'm just curious.
Public lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have those spaces.
Jim?
If we deem it a public lot, can you go back a slide? Uh, maybe one more, one more. Go back to the, yes. If we deem it a public lot, what does that mean in terms of chapter nine point two point one of Land Development Code?
Sure, chapter nine point two point one of Land Development Code says that any development within neighborhoods in a commercial is able to count any public locked spaces within three hundred foot of the front door of the property or the access point. So in doing that analysis, if this is considered to be a public lot and open up for public use, it would allow the development to remain eligible for counting these spaces towards their zoning compliance requirements.
Without having to do anything?
They would, no, it would just be counting towards it. So they would still need to make sure that they're demonstrating compliance with all other parking requirements. So that would be able to be counted as a piece of it. They would still need to have a shared parking agreement with eighty-five Catawba site. And if those spaces were not enough, still come up with any remainder of the balance of the required parking spaces.
And non-residents of the Chronicle Mill could still use those slots?
The only way you're around that, I guess, Tim, is if you somehow restrict Chronicle residents from parking there. That's the only way I see.
I don't know necessarily if you can get around it.
I'm just trying to make sure that we understand the ramifications of what we're doing when we say we make it a public lot.
Right. Well, can you do it, huh?
Right. Good.
I don't know, if you're being a little cryptic, maybe in line with.
Well, no, I mean, that's why I asked about the nine point two point one.
Yeah, it's a good question. It goes towards their allowance without having to do the.
Right.
Activate.
That's, yeah.
That's, yeah.
What were our plans for integrating this space with the new surface lot right next door? Is that gonna be considered, is there gonna be a barrier in between this? Is there gonna be one larger lot to incorporate these twenty-two spaces? Is that what we decided?
Yeah, no, they don't connect, so as far as I know, we're fixing to build this thing out and looking at Jonathan, but to my knowledge, I don't think these two were actually interconnecting each other. So you got the existing lot that Tiffany has shown, and then there's gonna be a space in between where you have the gravel lot or where you pave it. So, we do not plan to connect those two together.
Essentially, you've got three estate lots, adjacent estate lots?
Potentially.
Okay, my only thought on that is I would prohibit overnight parking. Otherwise, you know, we talked about that with the larger lot, you're running into people just camping out in it. And you want, I think you want some turnover when we have events in particular for these, for the spaces.
Do you have any thought on the hours that you would consider to be overnight parking? I know some of our events do go later into the evening, so if clarity from council on what would be considered as a trigger for overnight parking would be helpful.
Do you all already have some parameters around that?
I'm not sure. I would defer to the police department.
Ten, eleven o'clock to six AM would be a good time.
Sure, that's fine. I just think if we're gonna look at signage, it would be helpful to outline those parameters on the signage, so I.
Jim, what did you, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Sometimes, starting around ten PM or eleven PM till six AM. But what I would say with that is, is we wouldn't start looking into it ourselves unless we had a complaint or later in the evening when we noticed all the other cars kinda dissipated. And we'd probably look into seeing what car, whether it weren't. But we really wouldn't look into it unless we had a complaint or a lawsuit.
If you still don't understand correctly, Jim, explain that to me one more time.
So, typically, in certain districts like neighborhood center commercial, Tiffany, feel free to jump in, and I would assume downtown district also.
There are, there are some other things?
In terms of what you can count for your parking, you're allowed to count, you've got your site, but you can count certain other parking that's not on your site towards your required parking spaces. And so if there's a public lot within X.
Three hundred and fifty.
B, then even though it's not on your site, you can count that towards your required parking. And so, what Tiffany was asking us is, you know, it's sort of unclear what this lot at eighty-five Catawba is. Is it a public lot that hasn't really been advertised as such? Is it a private lot, like, is it city-owned and we just don't know what we do with it? But when we say it's a public lot, that means that then they can go and they can count spaces in that lot towards their parking requirements, even though it's not on their site.
That's correct. That, the caveat being that our understanding of that requirement is that it has to be able to be safely accessed by pedestrians, and so you may notice that they are in the process of doing a pedestrian crossing mid-block. And so that would need to be fully installed and in place in order to count either the spaces at eighty-five Catawba or, and/or the spaces that are in the portion that's on the city property if we elect to count that as a public lot.
Now, so, so the eighty-five Catawba, that's separate?
Yes.
So they still need to do, in order to count any spaces on the eighty-five Catawba lot, they'd still need to do the shared?
With that entity, which in full disclosure is themselves, but it would require a shared use between the occupant of the eighty-five Catawba Office Building and the Chronicle Mill Development. So, there would be a clear agreement that would be provided to the city that outlined timelines and how that arrangement of shared use is established and agreed upon by both entities. And a copy would be made available to us before we would consider that as an option for shared use of the parking spaces.
Do their, their required parking, is it, is it required to be around the lot availability?
I don't believe it was specified in their conditional zoning about the hours of operation. So if council elected to, it just says they have the ability to count public lots. So if you set specific hours for your own public lot, the conditional zoning, from my understanding of it, had not that level of detail included within it, so you'd be still fully within any eligibility purview for them to count it, even if it was restricted.
Yeah, if it was restricted?
Yes.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Would we help with his name up this time?
Yeah, I think he's the one to get ideas on what he had for the.
Yeah, so, we were just wondering if you have any recommendations when we talk about methods for delineating between the two lots? Do you have some suggestions there?
Yes, sir. It opens up all, any and all suggestions. The simplest in our minds is to clearly mark the third or seventh spaces that reside on private property as reserved or private. We can agree on the language. If we wanna leave the twenty-two spaces on city property unmarked, we can mark them public, whatever makes the most sense in terms of clarity for communication to residents and citizens. Signage would then refer specifically to reserved or private parking in terms of enforcement of restrictions or turnover.
Anything else other than signage that you would recommend?
Signage and spray hitting the lot. Specific spaces, reserved, public, private. We can agree on the exact wording or terminology, but what are the suggestions?
All right, well, me at this time, I always ask staff, our legal planning, while we want to be good partners with these folks, it's our responsibility to do what's in the best interest of the city. So the options before us, is there any clear choice for the city?
I don't know that we as staff can really make that call. I think what we have before us are several options for you all to consider to determine what's in the best interest of the city, based off how you'd like those parking spaces to be utilized. We will work with whatever direction is provided by city council to determine zoning compliance requirements for this applicant, as well as any other ones, in the future, based off of whatever you lay out. The one thing that we have talked about, just to further build on what Craig had said, was the reality of when you park a vehicle in a space, sometimes you can read that label until the car's parked on top of that label, right? So making sure that actually the striping is different colors as well, both to be clear to people who are visiting, residents, but also if there are any utilization of towing companies in the future for the reserved parking spaces, to be really explicitly clear for those entities, to make sure that no towing action occurs on any spaces that are on City of Belmont property. That is our only recommendation, is to make sure it's abundantly clear for all parties what the restrictions are if they choose a parking space in either of the options outlined. So, after that, it really is for council to provide us direction on how you view those spaces, and then we can work with the applicant accordingly to do whatever's needed based on your direction.
What color are they currently? Are they white?
They are all white.
I make a recommendation to leave the city-owned spaces as white, and then designate at the end of the stall, public and white. And then the applicant can do whatever they feel they want to do on that side. We just leave the same color as white, and then y'all could stripe it yellow if you wanted to do something like that. Sort of a difference.
And as far as like the signage thing, so for us, if we're gonna do like a time duration, right? So, I think, say it's ten PM to six AM, just as an example. Is that something that's just like one sign when you're coming off Chronicle Street into the public set, the public lot? Or is it like individual signs for each parking spot? I don't, you know, you get what I'm saying? Like, are we gonna need what, twenty-something odd signs or something? About there, or are we just doing one sign, and you come in, you read it, and you see what's going on?
I think probably two, two signs, probably along, other than another one on Chronicle Street, probably at both entrances. And both signs will need to say the same thing, like designate, you know, white spaces as public spaces, and then whatever other color, it could be the applicant's color.
Is that all right for the applicant?
Yes. Yeah, that's totally fine.
And just to be clear, to make sure, are we saying that no signs on the white poles in the parking lot, that that's sufficient between the striping and the signs at the entrances? Is that agreeable?
We, we agree with that.
And just to be clear, we don't have any plans for integrating these twenty-two spaces with that adjacent lot, that surface lot, in the future, I'm just trying to think long-term, because it just seems like there's a hodgepodge of lots here that.
Maybe in the future, not with the current bid that we have out right now. We'll fix it, put it out right now with the gravel lot.
How much of a buffer is there?
They're not interconnected. Johnson may want to come up, he may have further details about the bumper limits on it, but. The, I think there's like a couple alternates that we've designed. So we've got, you all heard, that we have the stall that's planned as the base bed, and then we have alternates to pave those areas. But to my knowledge, I don't think we interconnect this lot to the.
That's correct. They do not interconnect. And it's approximately ten feet separation between the two lots. We are bending it, the base bed would be gravel, and then we'd do an alternate for asphalt.
It's tough to say you could fill in that buffer, but it's not required to be there, is it? For Land Development Code, she's shaking her head.
I'm saying, no, because the parking space there is actually on the same lot as the gravel, this ground going out for a bit.
Right.
So actually, if it were gravel to gravel, our LEC would prefer that those lots actually be connected. But because it, or sorry, not gravel to gravel, asphalt to asphalt, we would actually prefer that interconnectedy. But with gravel to asphalt, we would wonder if the gravel would leave that surface and go onto asphalt and create some competing issues there. So, I think the openness to having those lots connect in the future once everything's asphalted, is something that would actually enhance compliance with Land Development.
Yeah, so based on the, the base bid when it comes in, if we have the budget to do this, then we do have contingency inside the bid where we could use contingency dollars to connect those two areas that we need to do that. So you can make it more continuous lot throughout that project and the existing project.
These are the property lines, you mean?
That's correct.
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, so we could have two distinct lots, okay? Because of property line. If we are worried about towing, or possible confusion of towing, someone in the city lot being towed instead of someone in the reserved parking for Chronicle, and we're worried about maybe cross-pollination of parking, why would we not just separate these two lots? Because it seems like, you know, before I said, why couldn't we not just put, I guess there's an existing curvy, maybe because I see the arrows. Why would you just separate them?
So I, that was an existing condition, so it's not something that I can require the developer to do on land that they own. If the city would like to do that, we certainly can explore that option. But keep in mind that by separating that, we'd need to tear out some of those parking spaces, and also having to create additional drive aisles. So one of the things to keep in mind is, because of just the pavement as it is on the ground, a driver is going to need to utilize those access lanes and sort of loop around as it's currently laid out, and go fluidly between land owned by the City of Belmont and land owned by Chronicle Holdings LLC. So, we could explore that buffer, but I think he would lose more parking than you would gain in terms of usability of that lot, if we chose to do that. But it would really be at your discretion on whether or not that would be a benefit.
I mean, it's just a thought, sometimes it's better to have clear delineation. If the overall plan is to incorporate those two parcels into one city lot, maybe having that clear separation would not be a bad thing.
I think the other thing to keep in mind, is certainly while it's an option, as you can see with the property line, there are several spaces that are segmented right across the property line there. So, I'll go back to this slide here. Per staff's direction, we have asked the applicant to only count the spaces for eighty-five Catawba that can be entered while on the eighty-five Catawba site itself. So you can see that there's that property line, and some of those spaces straddle the property line. So the question would be which ones would no longer be eligible that are counted as city spaces when we do that delineation, right? And then, I think we would need to have a further conversation with the applicant too, because of the, the way that circulation is currently navigated on their site. If we then created that buffer, it would impact the circulation pattern that was on the ground when they assumed this use. So, not to say those conversations can't be had, and council's interested in having them, but I think it's important to note that the way it was designed originally didn't have this property line, and from our record, the property line was added and delineated in two thousand and four. So that was, that was done after this area was already asphalted.
To me, would make the most sense if we think that eventually we are gonna connect this new surface lot with this smaller lot, the twenty-two space lot. If we do install a buffer there, we move back on the higher side so that you can keep that fluid flow. And if we have to sacrifice ten spaces to do it, at least we, you know, in the future, it kind of, I think it would work better, you know, maybe for both parties, to integrate, you know, the two lots that we own, and then allow them to keep thirty-seven and keep that flow, but it's still install a buffer that would not impede on that. Does that make sense?
Like, are you saying the buffer?
If we did that, I feel like we would.
Yeah, we might have twenty-two spaces.
Lose all of those, because then you still have that loop.
Well, loop doesn't have to go as far. I'm saying move the buffer back further on the higher side of the property, and maybe we lose, you know, eight or ten spaces in the process, but we allow them to retain the ability to circle through the lot. And, but we, to me, that would make more sense long-term if we do plan to tie this new service lot together.
So, I think if we're planning to do that additional parking lot, we should pave it. I don't wanna do that parking lot, but I understand I'm in the minority on that. But if we're gonna do it, I think we should pave it. And if we do that, I don't think we're gonna need a buffer. We hit a different paint color scheme that they're proposing would be just fine, because it's a massive parking lot at this point. So you just have those thirty or so on the front side, depending on different color. I think we need a buffer.
I think, I think I agree that the paint and signage should be adequate.
Sufficient, yeah.
To, to, because we don't wanna lose parking, at the end of the day. Not for the applicant, not for us, because that's why, in my opinion, discussing trying to keep this open to the public. But regardless, since it is gonna be public, to Jim's point, they can use that regardless, if there's a barrier or not. The Chronicle folks can use it. So, I think the buffer would just be impeding on additional parking that we're trying to accomplish. For me, I think the paint and signage would be adequate.
I agree with that.
So as far as what's needed, Tiffany, is, do we need a motion? Or is this direction kind of suitable for what y'all need?
I just wanna make sure that I can summarize and, I don't know if there's a motion needed, all the parts on that, but what I heard is that it seems like there's consensus to consider the area that's on the city property as a public lot, now that it's been improved, as long as the spaces are properly striped and delineated, and that we would have signs that outline overnight parking and either between ten PM and eleven PM and six AM, working with the police department on what is the recommended hours for that overnight, and make sure that's on the signage.
And the paint, and the painted, the different paint schemes on the asphalt.
Just to end of the signage, the overnight parking signage, to me, that almost has to be on the individual spaces, because if you put it at the entrance, to me, it's gonna cause confusion for your residents, because they're gonna look at it as all one lot, whether it's reserved or not, and they're, it's not even really make sense, which ones can I park overnight on, which ones can I not? Is that, don't you think we should put that signage for their overnight parking on the city spaces?
You brought up putting them on the light posts, the light posts around there.
There are, are there three? I'm not getting that right.
Can I speak to that real fast?
Yeah.
There's a light post right there, that's where you have the lines drawn for the separation. There's actually a light post right there in the middle of the parking lot, where they had one of the towing signs at facing the third direction. So that light post is a really good reference point to put a sign.
post is a really good reference point to put a sign, anything north of here would be public parking, just to let you know. That's kind of right, you just put them, instead of having to put them at every spot, you just put them at the entrance exit points, then put them on the light posts.
Yeah.
Cheaper.
No overnight parking in public spots.
Right.
I thought that, sorry, I'm trying to clear out my notes, Miles had suggested to keep the public spaces the white and then mark public on them, correct? Is that, was that agreed to? I just want to make sure.
Well, I know you guys are looking for something for council, is that not something, can we leave that to staff's discretion on that as we get to the leads of this? Because I think clearly all we need to define is, is the northern part of that parking lot public or not, which we've all decided to lose, as far as signage, painting, and stuff like that, I think that should be up to staff discretion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Perfect, thank you all so much, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda.
That can't be right.
Well, we can handle business if you guys want to switch out.